I can film what I want to film, gang. I can film what I want to film, gang. What you gonna do about it? What you gonna do about it? I film you too. I film you too. I film you too. Who gonna stop me from filming you? Who gonna stop me? Who gonna stop me? Right? Nobody gonna stop me. Nobody gonna stop me. I don't have to leave. The meeting is over. Don't touch me. Don't touch me and don't say shit to me. Don't touch me. No, it ain't. No, it ain't. No, it ain't. No, it ain't.
That not nobody touch you. That not nobody touch you. He right, he can film whatever.
I can film whatever I want to film.
You can send them on to counsel, but he already say he know they ain't got five votes. Now, how he know that? That mean they been politicking, jockeying, lobbying, or either he done talked to Nelson, he done talked to Poplar, he done talked to Kate Fields, Vicky Van Buren. You know the thing. Six to three, so forth and so on. And then Davis, he gonna follow them too. So my point is this. This is my point. I ain't gonna say nothing to do with it. I just want the message to go out clear, Mayor Zalik.
Point of order, point of order, point of order. Please, point of order. What, are we gonna continue to make a circus out of this? Or are we gonna move on and stop wasting the time of the residents that's in here and do the city business? He's just a lot of hoopla. And we need to move on with the business of the city. That's what we need.
Mister and madam chair, I appreciate you letting me continue, but that wasn't even a proper point of order. That was just some editorial about what Mister Davis believes. So he just like Kate Fields. He don't understand Roberts rules or order. I am in order discussing why I'm not gonna make a motion to postpone in light of Mister Kincaid's words. I'm not gonna make a motion to Senate or counsel, and I'm dead in order. Mister Davis just like Miss Fields when it comes to Roberts rules. He don't know him, but when you say his name, he gets so emotional.
May I say something?
After, so the clerk ain't got to read it yet.
No, I'm gonna say something. I do not, I don't mind.
Point of order. Let them call the vote. Point of order.
This person telling me he don't know.
Point of order. Where's the vote? Point of order.
So you don't sit up here and.
I'm gonna sit up here and shake my head even though I ain't got no hat and sunglasses on.
I wouldn't give.
And I wouldn't give a what?
Think about it.
I'm thinking and talking.
Well, you know.
And know what?
What I was getting ready to say.
No, say it in my.
You know every other doggone thing.
Say it, say it.
I don't have to say it.
But then don't say I know. Point of order is Jackie Poplar.
It's gonna be closed, I'm gonna vote.
I'm gonna tell it and you gonna shake your head at me. I'm gonna shake my head back. Whether I got a hat or sunglasses on tonight.
I wouldn't care if it's.
Point of order, madam chair.
You don't need to say how they gonna vote.
Let them call the vote.
So just shut up.
I know what you're doing and I'm playing with you.
I'm sorry.
We're trying to.
You should be sorry. That was wild.
But you're trying to shut up.
Now, you shut up. You ain't my mama or my dad. Miss Poplar, you circulated recall petition. Mister Kincaid, you signed them. And I'm here to tell you, Mister Nelson.
Point of order, sir.
The point of order gonna be that I'm gonna ask this policeman to remove somebody from the room. Where is the police officer? This council will not be made a mockery of. Where is the police officer? I'm gonna say something, Chester. That's real wrong to play games when I'm up here talking serious business and the mayor in the middle of a recall. You got whipsing them over there and beating them laughing. I'm here to tell you, you did it. So you hollered out point of order and because I'm cool with folks, I don't discriminate. It ain't a game. This serious business, folks done died. We dealing with wider issues and it ain't a game. And I want you to know I don't appreciate it. It sound like some Kate Fields never do. Enough is enough. So that's how I talk. I don't discriminate. I don't care what side a person on. Don't do that in these meetings. Holler out point of order and make a mockery of this process. It's wrong.
Mister Mayor, you've been over ten minutes so we can continue. Do we have a motion? If we do, can someone remind me what that is?
I worked with Dale Killde from Flint to Pontiac, all through suburban areas. Mister Gleason, when I said that on the Killbreath show, he came back real thrilled, kill and say, well, when I met Mister Mays, he was in a white limousine. And when the door opened, all kind of weed smoke come out before it was legal. I told Killbreath, you should ask him, did he peek his head in there and see was any Hennessy in there? And who was in there? Point of information before you leave the chair.
What's your point of information?
Did Mister Guerra always have a mustache? Is this some new?
It's new. All right, so that's all I have to say.
But I'd like to get back to working together. You're not gonna get anything done in Flint bickering. Let's do business and no bickering.
Attorney Linda Polley, number 12. Thank you, Ms. Polley. Go ahead.
Thank you for the courtesy. I wouldn't ask if it weren't important. I'm going to a community meeting. I'm supposed to be there in three minutes. I'm not gonna make it. But since Mister DeLaroni was gracious enough to offer his spot, I stayed so that I could have a chance to talk to you. I personally believe that every human being has the capacity to be a leader or to become a leader if they make the right choices. I've come to know most members of the council, some of them very well. And it is my judgment, after several years of following closely what happens here, that there is plenty of leadership potential in this room. You just need to execute. You're right there. You can do it.
I owe Eva Worthing and Kate Fields an apology because months ago, I wanted y'all to just stay seated. Because, you know, and just sit and just listen and all of that. I owe you ladies an apology 'cause I promise you, if I got called nasty white woman and all the names that y'all get called, yeah, I get up and walk out too. If more people on the council got up and walked out, when you get disrespected to the level that you get disrespected at, it's uncalled for. And I'm totally pissed off. The mother that raised me is a white woman. And I'm pissed. There is nowhere on nobody's map on this earth, on no demographics, nowhere, that says nasty white woman when you talking about demographics. Now, if somebody stood up here and said nasty black man, then you wanna holler racism or prejudice and all of this other kind of stuff. But you can disrespect women and you can disrespect the public and just, just, just the disregard and just.
This is the time when the council has the ability to respond to speakers?
Parliamentary inquiry.
What's your parliamentary inquiry?
I believe our rules do say that council has two minutes. We can respond after public speaking. But you just read something on our agenda which says council members may use their five minutes for final comments to address any issues that have been addressed by public speakers. So which is it?
That's clearly an error. So the council has two minutes to address the public. Is there anyone that would like to address the public? Anyone? No one wants to address Mister Davis?
Thank you, madam chair.
Parliamentary inquiry.
What's your parliamentary inquiry?
I'm just doing it back with her. Do she really think you can address all these people in two minutes? Why is people objecting to addressing the public? That's my position. So I know what these bogus rules is, but when you serving the public, who cares if it's two, three, or five?
Point of order, that's not a parliamentary inquiry.
Not finished, I was about done. I know she don't want me to say it, but my position is you should be able to address the people who you work for adequately. So that's my parliamentary inquiry.
And I owe you an apology. I never read that, but it's two minutes. We all, the rule say two, dress the. So Mister Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you, madam chair. But as Councilman Mays stated, it's so hard to try to begin to answer these folks seriously with the concerns they have that they went out their way to come up here and they can't even hit their thoughts.
To figure out and we need to do something as far as the budget.
Thank you, ma'am.
To figure out. That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my God. Two minutes?
Yep.
Oh.
Make a motion.
So Councilman Mays, you are next.
Yeah, you should have made a motion to suspend the rules so we can properly respond. You know, I just ain't got time for it. I might well go through the exercise. I move to suspend the rules so we can properly respond.
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules.
Madam Chair.
Mister Davis?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Well, no. You guys, come on. So roll call, madam clerk.
This is Mister Guerra out here.
Nope.
Just one second. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mister Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mister Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mister Mays?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, two no, passes.
And I figured it would fail. I figured it would fail, but I just wanna show people who really wanna serve, the citizens of the city of Flint. It ain't but five or 10 people here. Can't you impress?
Point of order. Your point of order.
What, what part of the agenda are we on?
He's in his final two, I mean, his two minutes, Ms. Worthing. Is that, does that answer?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
I'm gonna apologize for her for not knowing. Just as the lady apologized for her and Kate Fields, I'm gonna say to that lady, let me say this. You can't come in in the middle of a movie and then apologize for folks. These folks, you apologizing for them calling me a racist, misogynist, obtuse, nonstatistic. I didn't even know what some of that meant. And it's against council rules to make personal attacks. Further, ma'am, they called a separate press conference on a regular day to do those same attacks. Racist, misogynist, the most racist. I coined the phrase and said she must be an Eric Miseses. So I'm just laughing at you because you apologizing for folks who ain't apologize for themselves. And then the last meeting, she gave a fang and said, F you. So you keep apologizing for these folks. I wouldn't care if they were black, white, or polka dot. If they nasty, they nasty. There's some nasty black folks, some nasty white folks. I ain't never seen no polka dotted one as you described. But there's some nasty white folks, some nasty black folks, some good black folks and some good white folk. And I just want you to know. So apologize for, let them apologize for themselves publicly. And then you come in and have the movie and talking about a woman, how a woman is treated. These women is sitting up here in a arena where they want equal treatment. And they can get equal treatment while you steady talking to. I'll let y'all talk and let my time go past. 'Cause it's so important for you and Kate Fields and Eva to coalesce and communicate.
I wasn't saying anything, but you don't try to check me.
Well, we checking.
Point of order. I'm going to rule you all out of order. I'm giving you one.
That's some of the same crowd of folks. Look, they just got up.
Councilman Mays.
Hey, Mr. Booth.
I need you.
Come up here, come put that and got up for.
Councilman Mays, I'm gonna need you.
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
I can help call any member of the public into order. And you done got folks getting up. I want Mister Booth to make sure he don't let them police our meeting.
Councilman Mays, I am, I am capable as well.
Call the public in order.
You are right, but I was handling it. You can do it if I'm not handling it. I don't need help. I was getting started, but you're talking at the same time that I am. Now, sir, you have about 30 seconds. Would you like to take it?
You have to handle it quick and fast.
Papa Jared, only warning. I need you to please. Thank you, sir. I am, I am. I promise you, I am, I am. Thank you.
Ms. Galloway, it's the same.
Officer Booth, are you, are you, you are, okay. Thank you. He is in tune? Mister Mays, you have 30 seconds left.
It's the same people. I know this community and I know these same people, same people, same people, same council person. Same council persons and same people. So I don't care if I only got 30 seconds left. It's the same people, same people, same people and the same council persons raising heck. And I don't buy into what everybody else buying into. I don't buy into this woman treatment thing. I don't buy into us being called racist and names and then we say they white, they is white. It's a cultural difference. It is a difference between nice and nasty. And they need to apologize for themselves.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Worthing, you wanted to speak?
Thank you. Actually, I did want to thank Maison for her comments. She does have a name. She's been here several times. Her name is Maison. I appreciate it. You know, it was tough at the beginning 'cause it's been two years now that I've been on council. And when you're not used to someone screaming at you, towering over you, calling you names, it can be intimidating. Or even for those who are visiting.
Entertaining this point of order. Can you rule out of order? This was messed up.
You have a point of order.
That's correct.
And I'm acknowledging your point of order.
And they hollering, her and Galloway, steady talking. I'll just wait till they set up. And say if they don't cease talking, they shall be removed.
Your point of order. Go ahead, you got the point of order.
That's the point now. If they don't cease talking, they shall be removed.
Okay.
That's what it say. And that's what caused the chaos and us looking ignorant because they don't stop talking.
Point of order, Mister President.
We on a point of order.
We on a point of order, Councilwoman.
Mister President, we on a point of order. And she will need to wait till it's over.
Yes.
Point of order, Mister President.
She out of order. Mister President, we on a point of order.
What's your point of order?
We on a point, now what's my point? That's the, that's the question.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is where, this is where we got it. Even when we were in our training, we were talking about can you make a point of order while a point of order is on? And I vividly remember Coco saying that we couldn't. So if I can hear him, then I'll come back to you.
Her and field.
Go right here.
This press go through you to madam.
Wheeler.
Attorney. My point is we need to get a legal ruling rather than just listen to me and/or Kate Fields or anybody else. She ain't no lawyer.
Start to say Councilwoman, but you're not a Councilwoman.
Mister Winfrey.
Attorney Wheeler.
Point of information.
What's your point?
Mister President, you got the rule on my point.
I think your point is correct.
Okay.
Point of order, Mister President. Yeah. Wait a moment. You can say, oh, Lord.
What is your point?
My point of order was you made sure that we stopped talking.
Yes.
Councilman Mays continued to act as though he was running this meeting. We silenced ourselves as soon as you looked over here and he ranted and raved in his point of order. And now he's finally getting back to business. I want you to recognize that that was the reason why we're making a point of order.
I recognize that.
Point of information.
What's your point?
I need to make sure, does Ms. Wheeler understand? The question is, can we go into an executive session? Just a moment.
Oh, okay.
She wasn't here when this was brought up. That's why I'm talking about it.
Proceed.
I don't believe we can go into an executive session to discuss litigation that isn't our litigation. I'm not asking for an opinion from Ms. Wheeler. She's made it clear that we can't go into an executive session over somebody's other litigation.
What's your point?
It's not clear to me that we can't. She has not made it clear to me. I know if she wanna read the reasons why we can't, that would be the quick inquiry.
That is not a point of information.
And from what I've read so far, it is a point. If she would read the reasons we can't,
Mister Winfrey, that is an abuse of the point of information.
Then I can judge whether or not I believe that she's made it clear.
That is an excuse to take the floor.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
There's an appeal, the ruling of the chair. Tell me what is it you're appealing, Councilman?
I'm appealing you allowing her to proceed with something that could possibly be something that could hurt us legally. And I don't know what it is yet, so I need to get into that discussion. I appeal your ruling to have her proceed. She's like a loose cannon.
There's, there's the appealing. Councilman Davis is, is there support, Councilman Davis?
Mister President, I support.
Okay, there's.
So I won't be supporting the appeal.
Okay.
I'll be supporting the chair's ruling to proceed. And I'm gonna say this. Councilman Mays, we've done great, but in the last 10 minutes, has used point of order and point of information to take the floor.
Okay.
And so I'm asking you to be conscious of that.
I will do that. Councilwoman Fields?
Certainly be supporting the ruling of the chair because it's quite obvious to me that Mister Mays is trying illegal against the rules, against Roberts rules methods to keep me from speaking at all. And when he attempts to do this, it's normally the chair's ruling is correct and Mister Mays is incorrect. And in this case, Mister Mays is incorrect. I believe the ruling of the chair was correct.
Any other discussion on the appeal? Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mister President, I don't know who Ms. Galloway thinks she is to say whether I've done great or not. Ain't that about a trip? Councilman Mays has done great. Ain't that something? Well, she ain't done great. So you think I done done great? You ain't done great. You know, you don't, don't judge me. He's done great. You ain't done great for the last three, four weeks chairing the meeting. Don't talk about whether, talk about yourself. Look in your mirror. Now, we on the business of an appeal. That didn't have nothing to do with it. And she said it. So I'm responding to it, just ignorant. Let me say this, Mister President. Here she go.
Now, wait a minute.
You is ignorant.
Please, Councilman Mays, that's an attack.
Well, I've done great. What that's condescending and people who talk like that and to me, it's a part of ignorance. Now, my position is this. If anybody know anything about law, you gotta read and digest what this is before you go to discussing it. And what I still wanna know, Mister President, I want Ms. Wheeler to read the reasons that we can go.
Point of order. We are in an appeal. It is not an opportunity to take advantage and ask the questions that you didn't get before you appealed.
Okay, that's, that's well taken. Go ahead.
May I proceed?
Proceed.
Thank you. Because the appeal is dealing with you saying for her to proceed on something that we've discussed. So I wanna get the answers from Ms. Wheeler as to why, why is she talking? Can you warn her and get her the hell out of here? We sat and listened to her ignorant stuff and then when we talk. Here we go. Then we gotta deal with that.
Proceed, proceed, Councilman.
Ain't it crazy? It's getting to be a little much.
Proceed.
So that's my request, Mister President, in this appeal through you to Ms. Wheeler. I wanna look at the reasons that we can go in. Now, I might have them in my briefcase, but I wanna look at the reasons and hear them. And I wouldn't care if they vote to go in or not go in. I move that we go an executive session on this time for the reasons stated.
Point of order.
Concern pastors agreement.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Mister President, we're in the middle of an appeal.
It's an appeal. Your appeal.
I know we in the middle of the appeal and I'm gonna say what I said. Our motion is always in order. And so we gonna see what happens here. I move in protection of the city that we go an executive session to discuss whether we not, whether we should proceed. And it's tied to the concern pastors lawsuit.
Point of order, Mister President.
What's your point?
You cannot make a motion in the middle of an appeal. An appeal has to be dealt with.
Point of order.
What's your point?
If she knew Roberts rules.
Well, please rule on my point of order before he says anything.
I'm thinking you're right.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Mister, Mister President, Mr. President, when I got the flow, let me make the motion, and if it's ruled out of order, after I make it, that'll be the ruling, but her point of order in making a motion, you can always make a motion when you get the flow, and so I'm making one, and I move that we go into executive session if she persists on discussing this litigation because it's all tied into the concern.
Point of order. Is there a motion on the floor? If it is, he needs to stop talking.
We making a motion.
So, you, you made the motion.
Ain't that foolish? Can you hear a motion being made, ma'am?
Councilman, hold on.
But you the one talking about.
Here's what I want to do.
Point of this, point of that, interrupting it. You ain't no genius at this, Ms. Galloway. You looking stupid.
Councilman, I'm trying to get your stuff in order here.
Man, look.
You said, you said, you put a motion on the floor.
Hey, look, I'm making a motion.
You making a motion to put on the floor.
To go into executive session to continue to discuss this stuff.
And I'm saying.
And you seen what it was settlement agreement concerned pastors as it relates to stuff that could have a detrimental effect.
I don't think you can make that motion, and we, we've got one already on the floor, and I would want to, just so we'll be in order, I would defer.
Point of information, Mr. President.
What's your point?
If we lose this appeal right or wrong, and she proceeds recklessly, you won't make it, so I'm thinking I'm doing it now properly because I'm a trustee of the city.
I understand.
Whatever you and the city attorney rule, we know we can appeal at any time.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm almost certain that we.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
There's a, there's a.
Point of order, Mr. President. You cannot appeal when there is appeal on the floor.
Yes, Councilman, we going, we going through this. You know that.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Point of information.
Every decision of the chair.
What's your point of, what's your point of information?
Mr. President, when will you rule Mr. Mays out of order? Now, he's disrupting this meeting with the meeting.
Well, I, I know, I know Councilman Mays knows the rules, and I know, I know you know you can't do it.
Point of, Mr. President.
What's your point, Councilman?
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Councilman, you got one appeal on there.
Any decision of the chair, you need us to read it, can be appealed from.
That's true.
And you just made a decision.
But, but not.
Your job is to ask, is there a second? If it is, it is. If it die, die. At any time, you can appeal your decision.
You can make, you can make an appeal, but.
That's correct. I just did what you're supposed to do.
But I'm finished. You can make that appeal, not when it's one already on the floor.
Mr. President, that ain't true. I'm gonna tell you why. I ain't trying to argue first. Coco told y'all that you can do a point of order and you can appeal. You can have that.
Okay, then tell me what section you're reading from, Councilman.
What section am I reading from?
That you can do an appeal while you already got one out of it.
I will read that if you want to discuss.
Because I don't, well, because I don't.
I'll read it. It's easy. It's easy. It ain't hard at all.
What's your, what's your, what's your point?
It's my understanding, and we have adhered to this rule, when there is an appeal on the floor, there's no additional conversation.
Point of order.
Everybody gets to speak once.
What's your point?
Point of order, Mr. President. Every decision, and I'm, I'm gonna point to the section.
He's not reading the valid. Every appeal is appealable, but not.
Not when you're.
Any two members, this is on page 18.
Can Councilman Mays share where he's reading from?
Would you please, Councilman?
All you gotta do is be quiet. I was saying on page 18.
Point of order. Councilman Mays is manipulating the rules. He's not in a point of order. He's in an appeal, and he still has not showed us in our rules where you can be in an appeal. He's already shown that he can appeal. He has not shown in our rules where he can appeal in an appeal.
Yes, I don't think we can do that.
Mr. President.
Councilman Mays, what's your point?
Mr. President, can, can, can somebody show me where you can't appeal any decision? Just say you can. All decisions.
Mr. President, why is he still talking?
Because I got a mouth.
Why is he still talking?
Why aren't you still talking?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Nobody talking to you. I'm about to cuss.
Hold on. We're trying to find out, we're trying to find out where we're supposed to be, or what we can do. Can you give me a chance to do that?
I'm so tired of her. I mean, they been here for years and don't know these basic rules.
Hold on, hold on, Councilman, hold on, so they won't have a complaint against you, and they're right.
And they gonna complain. Ain't nothing you do about it. That's every week, every day. You can't stop them from complaining. Shit, that's every day.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
Now, he's cursing, and he said, yeah, and we can record the record.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, and so I want him to be removed. You done said damn.
I say whatever I say. Ms. Galloway, I ain't studying you.
Let's bring this thing to order.
You need to go on with yourself. You is an artist of utter confusion. You like the devil.
Mr. Mays is violating the Disorderly Persons Act and needs to be removed.
I ain't studying her BS bull. You want me to say it? I'll say it again.
Now, here's what I need to do.
You're no pretty ignorant, but.
Councilman, here's what I need you to do. I am trying my best to dispense with these points of order and these.
The way to do it is appeal.
And the appeals. Now, we have been trained, we can't, we can't do an appeal when there's an appeal on the floor, Councilman, and that's what I'm saying. I understand. We can't do an appeal, we can't do an appeal when there's an appeal on the floor.
You wrong. Your job is to say, is it a second? All this shit, all.
What's your point? She's using a bike.
I'm not out of order.
He is violating the Disorderly Persons Act and needs to be removed.
Hold on, hold on, let me hear your point of order. What's your point of order?
This is two council people.
They been talking all through mine.
Because he does not have the floor, and he just keeps talking no matter what you say or anybody else says.
You directed me to show you something.
Can I have all talking, please, to, to cease while I make it? Because I think I made the ruling. Now, I said that you couldn't make an appeal on an appeal. Councilman Mays said I was wrong. I don't believe that I'm wrong. I think that's what we were taught. Now, we could really move on all of this stuff if you were willing, but I think you really, we've got folks around here that just want to bog this thing down and go nowhere. Now, your first appeal was that I let Councilwoman Fields proceed, and I understand you said you were protecting the city, and I said, "Well, I was gonna let her proceed because she had been given advice from the attorney, watch what you say," basically, for the lack of a better way to put it. And then, as we proceeded, you, you did your appeal. That's the one I was trying to dispense with, Councilman Mays, when you said you appealed my first decision to let her proceed. And then, we got into more discussion, and then you appealed me again. Now, we can get so bogged down into these appeals, I can't remember what's going on. What's your point?
Didn't you ask me to point out where all questions arising and decisions are subject to appeal? Didn't you ask me to find that?
Yes, because that was, that was one of your colleagues that had asked.
That's what you asked me to find. I found it in 1.2. Now, what happens after that? If Ms. Wheeler don't believe it, or you don't believe it, then, you know, it is what it is, but it say all questions.
I decide, and I'm telling you what I decided. I'd like to do that first appeal that you had so that we can move on.
And do you agree that all your decisions are subject to appeal as you and Ms. Wheeler disagree with the plain language of our rules?
I agree that, that all appeals are subject, all decisions are subject to, decisions are subject to appeal if there isn't an appeal on the floor.
No, it don't say nothing about ain't no appeal on the floor. Do you know if you didn't conduct an appeal right, it would be chaos?
Point of order. Where in the rules, under an appeal, is it saying he can argue with the chair?
Finish this point first. She just interrupted.
So, what I, and what I asked you to do, Councilman, when, when I first asked you, I said, "Show me where you can appeal when there, wait a minute, when there is appeal, and you haven't shown me that."
Let me ask you this question, and then I'll leave it alone. I don't care what you do. I can withdraw it. You can do what you want. You don't believe you making decisions in the middle of appeals. You making decisions on who you call on? Do you call on them twice? Every decision a chair make is subject to appeal. It says that.
That's not what we are arguing.
I, look, go on do what y'all gonna do. Withdraw the appeals if it need to be withdrawn, and do y'all thing. You wrong, Mr. President. Any decision you make can be appealed from. We'll talk about it later. You letting these women run you crazy with that mess.
So, now, you, now, so you, you withdrawing your appeal?
Yeah, yeah. Let's see why she headed and what she did.
So, Councilwoman Fields, you had the floor. You've been, you were not advised by the, the attorney, but just be.
Point of information.
What's your point, sir?
Will you and Ms. Wheeler discuss at a later date all your decisions sitting in the chair can be appealed from, and under our rules, whether it's an appeal or not? We can't let you ramrod us on no appeal. Your decision to not ask for a second can be appealed.
And I'm not trying to ramrod you, Councilman.
Mr. Winfrey.
You've got the, you've got the floor.